Manager, does that hurt?
Yeah.
She's, I think it's general operations. It's everything, yeah. Okay. I'll call this regular meeting of the City Council to order at 6 o'clock Tuesday, June the 27th. The invocation will begin with, led by Warren Ferguson, Councilmember Ferguson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by our own Ken Meismer. You may stand if you wish.
If you're so inclined, please bow your head as I approach. Heavenly Father, we are all thankful for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for a sense of welfare in the true needs of our citizens, for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibility. Grant us the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our work with clarity and accuracy, our deliberations with wisdom, and our decisions with impartiality. Let our community be the best place in Texas to live, love, learn, and work in worship. Bless all our loved ones, let them be safe, let them be healthy, and let them be happy. Dear God, let us live more simply so that others may simply live. And all God's children said, "Amen."
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for starting us off today. Please be sure your cellphones are tuned down. And I don't care if you take your shoes off or leave them on, it doesn't matter. Item number one is announcements of community interest. And Ms. Perry, is this going to be the last time you do this for us? We're so sorry, so do it right.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mary Council. First of all, the City of Kerrville Municipal Offices and the Buttholdsworth Memorial Library will be closed on Tuesday, July 4th, in observance of the Independence Day holiday. All city park facilities, including the Olympic Pool, Carver Park Sprayground, and Parks and Recreation Office will remain open. Although, please be aware that Louise Hayes Park will be closed to vehicular traffic on July 4th in conjunction with Robert Earl Keen's Fourth on the River event. Municipal offices will resume business, normal business, on Wednesday, July 5th. And as I mentioned, in celebration of the Independence Day holiday, Robert Earl Keen's Fourth on the River event will be held on Tuesday, July 4th, at Louise Hayes Park. Activities will include a concert, food vendors, and of course fireworks sponsored by Mamacitas. We hope you will join us for the largest fireworks display in the hill country, which will begin around 9:30 PM. This event is free and open to the public. For more information about traffic restrictions in the area during and after the event, please visit the City of Kerrville's website, KerrvilleTX.gov. The City of Kerrville is also pleased to offer residents an inside peek at the construction progress on two exciting new projects from the comfort of your own home. Time-lapse cameras have been placed at both the Kerrville Sports Complex and Water Reuse Pond Construction Sites, so you can watch as these facilities start to take shape. Visit the City of Kerrville's website or the YouTube page to watch monthly update videos and get a firsthand look at all that action. While you're there, you can take some time to check out some of the other great videos that the City of Kerrville has to offer. You can stay up to date on some of the latest library events, watch what has happened at a recent City Council meeting, or find out more about upcoming Parks and Recreation activities from the City YouTube page. Subscribe to our channel, and you will be notified when new content is available. So we hope you enjoy. That's all I have.
Okay. I have two things to add to that I think would be appropriate. General Walter and Barbara Shellhay celebrated today their 64th anniversary. They've contributed a lot to the City of Kerrville. She has been under the weather in the hospital, is now in rehab, but he tells me that she's doing well, and I hope he takes her some ice cream. So congratulations to them. Also, I got an email that the first River Trail Patrol from the Kerrville Citizen Police Alumni Association, Rose, am I right? Did their first drill. They're going to be helping KPD with the River Trail Patrol, and they kind of did. It's called a shakedown run. That sounds kind of menacing, but anyway. So they're going to be out for your safety and protection. And our thanks to the Alumni Association, if you'll relay that back to them. If you see them out there, you'll know what they're there for, and we certainly appreciate that. Any other announcements from Council? If not, item number 2A is a proclamation, and it is in observance of Parks and Recreation Week. And so we will ask, because they are here today, and we appreciate that this evening, five members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to join me in the front. Diane McMahon, Bedford Mitchell, Rose Bradshaw, Jackie Kane, and Greg Schrader. Okay, since they are without, they are without an acting chair, the vice chair, Ms. McMahon, is going to stand in tonight as the chair and receive the proclamation from the city. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Kerrville, Texas, County of Kerr, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of the citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and a region, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality in and our communities in suing the health of all citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and a region, and whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, you'll see who wrote this at the end. And whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Natural Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development. Did you know you did all that, Diane? And produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of the community, provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreation outdoors, whereas the U.S. House of Representatives, there's where we got this, has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the City of Kerrville, Texas, County of Kerr recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore I, Bonnie White, Mayor for the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2017 as Parks and Recreation Month. So let's give a round of thanks to these who contribute to that. And Rose was the first female Parks Ranger at Gorms Lake Park. Now, what do you think? Item number three is the Visitors and Citizens Form. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the Speaker Request Form and give it to the City Secretary. City Council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers will be limited to the first 10, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. I have one request, Mr. Schrakey?
This week, I just wanted to point out what a great job not only this council, but previous councils have done in working with foundations throughout the community. And my example this week is the Calhoun Foundation in Peterson Plaza. I don't know if you all noticed, as we left last time after executive session, but there was a couple dancing on the plaza. They had music, they were dancing and practicing such, and it was just such a beautiful evening as the sun was coming down. And I actually ran and grabbed my camera and took a picture of them. And it just, we have such great public spaces in this town, and people are realizing that and coming and using them. And I just wanted to thank not only you guys, but past councils for doing all that work. Thank you.
I hate to ask this, but was there any music or anything?
Yes, they had brought a boombox with them. They were playing music, and they were, I'm not a good dancer, so I couldn't tell you, but it was one of those dances from the, you know, like the 40s or 50s that they were working on. It was beautiful.
Just wanted to make sure we're on sound territory. Okay. Item number four, thank you, Bruce. Anybody else wish to speak in the Citizens' Forum? If not, we'll move to item number four, is the Consent Agenda. Item number 4A through 4D, if no one wishes those to be removed from the agenda, let me ask, anybody from Council? Anybody from the audience wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? If not, I will accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second to approve items 4A through 4D. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries 5-0. Item number 5A is Resolution Number 23-2017, granting a conditional use permit for an approximate 2.31 acre tract of land within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, with a street address of 2021 Arcadia Loop, located within a residential cluster zoning district by permitting said property to be used for a bed and breakfast and making said permits subject to certain conditions and restrictions. Mr. Browning?
Certainly, this is a request for a conditional use for bed and breakfast. I request the Council hold a public hearing, and we will, the applicant is here, and we'll answer any questions at the end of that session.
Are there any questions by Council for Mr. Browning or the applicant? I just had one for either. I asked earlier if we had any regulations or ordinances pertaining to B&Bs in the city limits, and we do not, I understand. So maybe something for, you know, future to look at. But zoning may take care of that, I don't know. But I was wondering, the number of guests, what it falls under? Is there a limitation on that at all, or?
There is a limitation in our ordinance for the number of bedrooms, and it's limited at six bedrooms. Now, not the number of guests.
I might just point out for Council and the audience that, and you've seen it in your packets, but Planning and Zoning heard this request, and they unanimously approved.
Yes, ma'am.
So I've been out there, I've seen it, I trust Councilmembers have as well. I didn't have any other questions. If there's not, then I will open a public hearing at 6:11, which is required for this. Would anybody from the audience like to speak? I do have Charlie McElvein. And I guess this will do for 5A and 5B, or? Okay. Because those properties are together, so you'll understand.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is an exceptional property that is being discussed, and I certainly would encourage the councils to grant the conditional use permit. But if every bed and breakfast in this community were like this one, this would be an exceptional lodging area. The landscaping, the architecture, the amenities in the bed and breakfast are, like I say, exceptional. And in fact, this would be an ideal property to set the bar for B&Bs in the community. Others would have a challenge to match, but it is a first-class operation, and the Convention Visitors Bureau wholeheartedly endorses the project and certainly encourages the Council to approve the conditional use permit.
I don't guess we have a picture we could put up for anybody? Just for, I've been out there, and it's definitely a crowd pleaser. It's absolutely beautiful, both locations. And by the way, there were no objections. I read in the P&amp;Z report from any neighbors, but we are in the public hearing, so that's okay.
For the Council and for the audience, the properties are jointed properties, and it says 2021 and 2031 Arcadia Loop. This is the 21 property. And the item, the next item, 4B, is for the 2031 property. The writeouts have done a very nice job with this property.
I just wanted to see if there was a picture of the outside.
Oh, there is.
But that's okay.
We reduced the number of slides than what the writeouts gave us. They gave us quite a number of photographs.
He is very.
They're very proud of it, and they should be very proud of it.
Yes. All right. Any questions by Council, or should no comment from the audience? Anybody wish to speak? If not, we're out of the public hearing at 6:14. If there's no more discussion by Council, I would ask for approval of Resolution Number 23-2017 as read. Do we have a motion?
Will be approved.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries 5 to 0. Item number 5B is a continuation of 5A. It's a different numbered property contiguous to, Mr. Browning, anything you'd like to add?
No, ma'am, this is the, I'll just put a photograph of the, this is the 2031 property. P&amp;Z reviewed this and recommended approval. You need to hold a separate public hearing for this, even though they're adjacent properties. And I'll try to answer any questions, if not, the writeouts are here, and they certainly can.
And I need to go ahead and read the Resolution Number 24-2017, granting a conditional use permit for an approximate 2.07 acre tract of land within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, with a street address of 1 Arcadia Loop and located within a residential cluster zoning district by permitting said property to be used for a bed and breakfast and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions. Any questions by Council?
I do have one. Are these two actually going to be two separate businesses, or are they actually one business?
These will be separate. Mr. Rideout, you want to answer that question?
Yes, they are, they are separate properties, and technically separate B&Bs, but they are adjacent, but, so.
Will you manage these yourselves?
Well, that remains to be seen. We're going to attempt to do that, but, but parts of it. But we have, we have services lined up for lawn care and maid service and et cetera. But we're not going to attempt that ourselves, but.
Okay. There's no more questions. I will open the public hearing at 6:16. I had one that wished to speak, Mr. O'Connor? I split you all up.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I think Charlie McElvein has been reading my mail, but I wanted to bring up a few points on this as well. I went out, I took a look at the subject property, and as a trained planner, I actually looked for three different elements when assessing this. I said, "Look, does this development really respect the neighborhood? Two, does it respect the environment that's there? And three, does it impact the value of other properties within the neighborhood?" In terms of respecting the neighborhood, I thought the character, the scale of the whole development was very smartly done. He hasn't overbuilt for the lot here. He's improved the flow between the properties and so forth. In fact, when I initially met Mr. Rideout out at the property, I actually passed it by and couldn't find it. It was so well-integrated within a residential neighborhood that, I mean, it truly blends and is truly an asset. The landscaping, the site amenities, everything is first-class. In terms of respecting the environment, if you take a look at the pictures and so forth, I mean, he has preserved all the sightlines to the river, the use of natural colors, fibers, materials, and so forth, is very respectful of the natural environment out there. I mean, he very much integrates the development into nature, as opposed to simply overpowering it. And in terms of the value of the property, well, I'm glad I'm not Mr. Rideout's banker and so forth, because he has really improved this, and I would dare say, raised the value of not only that property, but I think anybody who's a neighbor to Mr. Rideout. I wholeheartedly support this and think that it's going to be a community and neighborhood asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Well said. Anyone else from the audience wish to speak in the public hearing? Any comments to those remarks? We'll close the public hearing at 6:18. If there's no further conversation, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-2017 as presented.
So moved.
With a motion and a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, and thank you for the addition to the community, Mr. and Ms. Rideout. Item number 5C.
We just want to say thank you very much. It's been a lifelong dream and a ten-year ordeal, and we're, we have crossed the hurdle tonight, and we appreciate that.
Well, congratulations. Okay. Item number 5C is Resolution Number 25-2017, granting a conditional use permit for an approximate 1.69 acre tract of land located on Lot 1A and part of Lot 2, Block 1 of the Adams subdivision, a subdivision within the City of Kerrville, Texas, and otherwise known as 1750 Junction Highway. Said tract is located within the 4W zoning district by permitting said property to be used for vehicle sales used and making said permits subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. Mr. Browning?
Yes, ma'am, this is a request for a, the city's ordinance calls it a vehicle sales use lot, and it is in conjunction with the applicant's current business, which is appliance repair. You may know the facility. We held public hearings at P&amp;Z, and P&amp;Z recommended approval. The applicant's neighbors were there, there may be some here tonight. We did refine the area a little bit to make the neighbors a little happier. You'll notice that on, in your package. We placed a restriction on the area that the used vehicle sales can be taken from, but other than that, we recommend approval.
Okay, any questions, Council? I noticed that it's a large tract of land, but you're only proposing the use on the front, and that was with the condition we read in here that came from P&amp;Z. All parking areas shall be paved in accordance with the City of Kerrville zoning codes.
Yes, ma'am, that was a, the location of the used area, as you see on the plot, on the drawing, was at the request of the neighboring property, who wanted to do that in a way to preserve the trees and preserve the buffer between them and the actual property.
Any questions for Mr. Browning, by Council? If not, this also requires a public hearing, one or a public hearing at 6:21. I don't have any Speaker Request Forms. Would anyone from the audience wish to speak on this agenda item? If not, we're out of the public hearing at 6:21.25. And if there's no more discussion, we have everything I think we need, Council, in the packet. But if there's no more discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-2017. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries 5-0. Item number 6A is abandonment of emergency access easement between Bluff Ridge and Glenview. This was actually an agenda item proposed by a member of the community, Mr. Jason McCormick. Would you come and present your request to us, please?
Go ahead. Good evening. Kimberly McCormick, and this is my husband, Jason McCormick. And we have recently purchased a lot, 2100 Bluff Ridge, at the top of Bluff Ridge. There is an easement that runs from the top of Bluff Ridge down to Glenview that has been there for 20-plus years, that has been deemed for emergency vehicle use only. And we have gotten some notification that about 16 years ago it was brought before the city that that be abandoned by the city, because it's no longer being used and cannot be used. And it never came to conclusion. So we are developing the property and trying to improve, again, the City of Kerrville and put a home there for us and our family. So we're asking that the City Council go ahead and pass the motion to do that and to abandon it. It has not been maintained, the property, but there's also some safety issues at this point. It's now private property because we own it, and there are pedestrians that walk up and down it. And of course, if something were to happen, they would be on our property, so that's a concern. The other concern is we're wanting to develop it and, of course, put our home and things of that nature. We've had a meeting with the fire chief to make sure that, closing off that road, you know, the city did not need it. And the discussion was that it would not and could not be used for emergency vehicles at all at this point. So we're just asking that the city kind of come to a conclusion so that we can deem it private property and start developing our home.
Does staff have the PowerPoint slide that we were going to put up?
We did.
If you would do that, so that people could get an idea. Wish we could blow that up a little bit. But the red circle, of course, is the subject area, and I don't know, a number of you here have been there, and it looks like Chief Smith is prepared to go over his needs. This is a very tall hill, the circular.
Steep.
Yes, very steep. And the circular drive that you see at the top is, was developed with housing on either side. You can see in Lot 7 and, is it 8, beside it? The subject property the McCormicks have is on the right, and they actually would own, am I correct? There's two property owners that this particular easement would return to. Am I correct?
That's correct.
The easement is actually 100% on power property. That's the question you're asking. Oh, yes, below us, yes.
Below you, yes. So there's, yeah, there's two owners that would be affected. And right now, it's on your property, but it's an easement that was listed. You can't read there on there, but it said Fire Lane Easement. Am I correct, Chief?
You're correct.
Okay. And at the time, and maybe you'll cover this, I guess they weren't developed along there, the housing subdivision, but there's a street, and the top of your screen, West Crest, that actually you can see on there accesses those houses on West Bluff, I think, Bluff Ridge.
This may be a better view for you, Mayor. So let me start by saying I've had the opportunity to meet with the McCormicks and the residents of, which staff has. And we've looked at this issue thoroughly. And what we've attempted, staff has attempted to do is just present the facts surrounding the fire lane. And the facts are, is that the fire department simply doesn't use it today. And we don't use it for a number of reasons, but primarily there are two. It's steep, it's narrow, there's no shoulder, and it's overgrown with vegetation. And let me just go ahead. This is the view from the Glen Road side, the lower end of the fire lane at Glen Road.
And that's deceptive, Chief, because it's much steeper than that in real life.
You are absolutely correct, Councilmember. This picture does not give any soundness in terms of how steep that hill actually is.
And the other view, the next slide, is the other side, yeah.
The next slide is, that's the Bluff Ridge, our top side of the lane, and you can see that the slope is tremendous when you're looking at it from that angle.
So do the McCormicks own all the way to the fence on the right-hand side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With the easement, what was recorded is an easement. And by the way, I read in here, there's also a 20, that is also a 25-foot sanitary easement for sewer, and it says that lies within the fire lane easement. Maybe somebody can explain to me what that means and the reason I? Finish your presentation, Chief, and go to that.
Okay. So let me get back to the photos. This is the bottom of the fire lane at Glen Road. This photo shows the top of the fire lane, which is the Bluff Ridge side. I talked about the narrowness of it and it being overgrown with vegetation. You can see that here. The next photo provides a close-up. So that's one of the primary reasons the fire department doesn't use it, but there's also other reasons. We actually have better access to Bluff Ridge from the north and the south. If you look to the right of the slide that's in front of you, it shows the previous location of Fire Station 2, which is the red box, the blue box. At the bottom of the slide, it shows the location of our current Fire Station Number 2. The top box has an arrow pointing to the actual easement. And that green area, that shaded green just above the easement, wasn't developed in 1980, whenever the fire lane was installed. From my research and discussions with the fire department, we've never really used it. When we were in the old Fire Station 2, the blue route that you see on your screen was the primary route we used to access Bluff Ridge. Today, from the current Fire Station 2, the red route is the route that we use, and fire department just does not use it. department just does not use it.
Any questions for the chief?
I got a question, Mayor. Is there any reason that you can think of that you would need to use it in the future? Maybe if Bluff Ridge was not accessible, would you, would you use it then?
I'm sure that there are probably incidences that prompted us to have to use it, but I can tell you that our longest tenured battalion chief in the fire department has in excess of 30 years, 34 years probably, to be exact. And no one in the department can recall using it in the past 30 years for anything other than a grass fire, a brush fire that was on the side of the, the easement. I spoke with the previous chief who served this department from 1984 to 2008 and apparently when this issue came up in 2001, they didn't use it then. And he had been chief since 84 and he doesn't recall the fire department ever having a need or use for it.
I might mention that also in our study, I asked for a little history on this and it, it appears that in August of 2001, it was placed on the council agenda and the council unanimously voted to abandon the easement for those very reasons. Although it says temporary emergency, it, it doesn't say temporary on the sign and I don't know what it says on the, on the deed or whatever survey that they had. So, but that is, for some reason, it passed on the first reading, you know, we require two readings for every ordinance according to our charter and there never was a second reading and we don't know why. Nobody remembers at the time why. So, I just thought that was a point of interest to bring about. And again, we're going to get to you speakers, we have a number of you. What I wanted to point out also, unless, was that, did that answer your question, Mr. McCormick?
No.
Okay. I'm curious, in that meeting, it actually happened to be 5A in that ordinance reading as well, but it says, "Staff recommends," this was from 2001 again, "Staff recommends the city retain the 25-foot sanitary sewer easement that lies within the fire lane easement." So, where is that, staff? I mean, is this, the reason I'm asking is this is a concrete road, it's kind of substantial and I don't know if, I have two questions. If we, if it reverts back, can they build over it? Can they tear it up? Can they rip it out? And where is, what do we have to do to maintain the sanitary sewer easement?
Chief, if you could forward back a couple slides.
Okay.
Zoomed in oval.
Before I do that, Mayor, the, what you're referencing, I just wanted to point out to you in the 2001 agenda item, it says it was intended to provide alternate access on an interim basis until Westcrest Drive was constructed. Is this the one you need here?
If you could pull it up, just one, Chief. Mayor, the, our understanding is that the 25-foot sewer easement is the one that comes from the right of the screen and then crosses the fire lane access easement and then goes parallel and partially overlaps there. We would want to continue to maintain that sanitary sewer easement, but it does not overlap, our understanding is it not overlap the entirety of the fire lane easement from Glenview up to Bluff Ridge, it's just a portion of it.
I, I guess the reason I was asking is would the intent be to, to tear up and, and build over it? Your intent would be to leave it? Are the other residents here on the block below you, by any chance? Is your intent to leave it? Is your intent to leave that concrete road intact? Well, I agree, I just, I have a reason for asking, so. I, I guess, are you done, Chief?
I am.
Are there any questions for Chief about that?
I had a question for McCormick.
Go ahead.
Where, you are building a new house and it's, and it's on Lot 8. Yes.
That seems to be the only vacant one there, so.
They're both vacant.
It's, it's very steep.
Yes. Yes.
It's, it's going to be a tough house.
It's a challenge. Lot 7 is, is empty below us, but that easement runs just on the lower right corner of our property, as you can see.
Right.
And doesn't actually cross the concrete road on our property at all. Our, our use for the road actually is just that, a road for our personal use to access the bottom part of our, you know, property or build a garage or whatever we, we plan on doing. So, we don't have any plans on ripping up the concrete, but we do need to know who's responsible for maintaining it, if it stays, if the city wants to retain it. And number two, that it is, you know, private property at this point, even though if it continued to be an easement, we allow city access, but not public access to it for all kinds of reasons, liability reasons, everything. So, I mean, that's our biggest concern at this point.
Could that answer your question? Did you ask Summerlin? That answers that question. I have more. But you'd stay at the podium, I'm sorry.
I got a question.
Okay.
Is this going to be in the way of any of your building, the, the actual concrete road?
I'm sorry?
Will, will the road be in the way of building for y'all?
Is it in the way of building?
Yes.
No, we need it though to cut into, we will need access to it. The, the top of the key or what I'm calling, but at the cul-de-sac, that is not concrete, but that is actual property is very narrow. So, our plan was to use the entrance to that road to try to make a horseshoe as big as possible for our driveway so that we could have a turnaround because there's no parking available for our guests, because, you know, it's literally 20 feet wide maybe and it's also curved. So, we wanted to cut the corner and use that as well and be able to drive down and cut in a different path to kind of come in from behind the house that we are building, but it's not going to be in the way of our building, our structure, no.
Any other questions for them? I have a number of speaker request forms if we're ready.
Sure.
James Penlon?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is James Penlon. I live at 2108 Bluff Ridge Drive and I may get run off the hill, but I'm here to speak in favor of abandoning the easement. Every place we've ever lived, we've had easements all over our property and it's been our personal property, but whatever governmental agency could come and go at will and do whatever they need to in those easements. This couple has purchased the land, it is their land and I think since the city has no other use for it, the fire chief has said that they will not use it in case of emergency, they have other plans to do that and it should revert totally to the ownership of this couple so they can build their home and join what I think is one of the best neighborhoods in the city of Kerrville. If it were not abandoned, I think it is still their personal property. It's a very dangerous road that comes up. You can't see down it until your car goes over the edge and you can't see up until your car goes over the edge. People walk up and down there. I've seen people sitting in the middle of that emergency easement and people do not obey the signs, they drive up and down that. That's a shortcut over to Westcrest, so they don't have to go through down Glen and that area. Motorcyclist, 50 miles an hour up over the hill, that's fine. All hours of the day or night, it's used for, for driveways. So, if you do not decide to abandon it, I would like to urge you to at least shut it down somehow, let these people use it for their private property and stop the traffic and keep it a little bit more safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Linda Wagner?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Linda Wagner. My husband and I live on Bluff Ridge Drive. I hope you'll take these points into consideration and research them before ruling on this. The only other thing I would comment on, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, the bottom part of that road that they're wanting to use is going to belong to the lot that is for sale that faces Glen. So, if that person decides to block that off, they won't be able to use that road to come down, they'll still have to go up on Bluff Ridge Drive to exit. Right now, I would like to ask for a legible copy of the plat that shows this fire lane so that, so that we can see exactly who it benefits. The one I have from the title company is totally illegible. I don't know if everybody else's is that way or not. The other thing is as it looks now, the fire easement is a public easement by plat and benefits all tracks. It would need to be abandoned to benefit all tracks in subdivision. The only way to get rid of the fire easement as it's public is by condemnation. The only way to remove it as public is to replat the easement and to replat the easement would take a majority. I encourage all council members to come up and view the lane and the street that we live on. There are a lot of steep streets in Kerrville, I agree, but Bluff Ridge has got to be one of the steepest.
It's amazing.
And in bad weather, it is difficult to maneuver on the north end. Okay. We would love you to come see it, only to see that the street is not in disrepair, as was said. The street looks a whole lot better than many of our roads in Kerrville do, that lane does, I promise you, come look. The other thing, the topography of that area, because of it being so steep, the south side doesn't freeze quite as quickly as the north would. Okay, onward. The fact that this went before council in 2001, I was under the impression from Ms. Emerson that's not here, that someone below was going to purchase the lot below, their lot, and wanted to do the same thing, wanted to take over that road and that it was not approved by council. I'm sure you can look back in minutes of the meeting in, in August to find if that's true or not, but that's what I've, that's what I understand and nothing has changed since that time, it's still the same. Also, it's been stated, Mr. McCormick states that the road is in disrepair. It's not, I have pictures with me, but you've already seen pictures. The road is in great shape. It, it isn't better than Coronado and Lewis is, believe me. The other question I have is why weren't the residents notified the city was planning to abandon this fire lane by someone, planning someone? It's been up there since that subdivision was, since inception, that fire lane has been there. So, a lot of people up there have come to rely on that as a means of egress when there's a problem at the other end, on, on Bluff Ridge, on the, on the north end of Bluff Ridge. And other than that, I would say that Mr. McCormick knew when he bought that, that that was fire lane. Perhaps he was privy to information from the fire department that it was going to be abandoned by the city. I don't know. He did tell us two days after closing that he was going to be able to take that property over, so perhaps he found out some way that we, we didn't know about. All I have to say is, does a voice of one person for personal gain outweigh the voices of many for public safety? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't have any other speaker request forms, was there anyone else who wished to speak?
Zoning question.
Zoning?
Yeah. Subdivision ordinance question.
Bruce Drakey, 821 Earl Garrett. My question is general, within the city, the current ordinance requires that any dead-end street over 600 feet have a, an alternative exit and this street seems to be about 770 feet long and so I'm just, if we're going to do that, I'd want to encourage planning and zoning to look at, Development Department, excuse me, to look at the ordinance and maybe we don't need the streets to be 600 feet long. You know, maybe they could be longer and be a dead-end street.
Would anyone from staff want to address that?
I don't have an answer on, I know there's a limit, I don't know what that limit is, I'd be more than happy to research it and find out and report back to the council on it.
It would be internal, I would think, right, on the ordinance itself? So, we don't have an answer on that. The, the letter that I did receive from Ms. Emerson, I think we, we all have, we're provided a copy of it, but the issue that I think some of the residents, a lot of the residents have, and believe me, I know you're here tonight, I sympathize with your situation when it comes to safety because that's part of our duty as council members is to assure your health and safety. And we have stories that the backside does not freeze, that the fire lane that we're looking at does not freeze at all or as quickly as the other side. So, it would be only in those events when that access would be needed by any of the residents on that hill. So, you know, my question I think that I posed to staff earlier this week is, is there a way, actually, we're just in casual conversation, Mr. McDaniel and I, and I don't know the answer to this, but I know, just looking at everything, being a property owner myself, when we had people traversing across property that we owned, where there was not a designated easement for convenience, we shared the lot, we had, we risked the liability there and I, I understand what we said earlier about that. I understand the health and safety concerns should there be a freeze. My question is, and I don't know if there's an answer to this, but if we abandon it as an easement that we no longer need, then is there any way we could assure the use by the property owners there that residents in the case of emergency could use that in case of a freeze? And I don't know, Mr. Hayes, is there an answer to that? Is there a voluntary thing? Other than that, I almost feel like we're, we're looking at imminent domain. You know, we would be taking private property because, we don't have a public use for it because of what the chief said. We don't have a public use for it, so if we don't abandon it, then it's almost as though we'd be taking that property by imminent domain for a potential problem in the future. Do you have an answer to that? I don't.
Do you want him to, I didn't know.
Mr. Penlon?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Bill Thawt. I live at 2115 Bluff Ridge Drive. I just wanted to cover a couple of points, some of them have already been covered. First of all, I totally agree with the applicant's need for additional access and I personally have no objection whatsoever for them using this easement for access. I was involved in 2001 in the same issue and the party that was looking at the lot below wanted to use it as a private driveway for that property and we in the neighborhood objected to that. In order to control the traffic, the crash barriers were established at the lower end and upper end of the, of the drive or the easement. At some point in time, those were removed and I am not aware of why they were removed. Second, and this just echoes the point that was made previously, I am a retired professional engineer, civil engineer. I designed streets and subdivisions in El Paso, Texas. By the way, in El Paso, the maximum grade that was allowed was 12%. Bluff Ridge Drive is 24% and that shouldn't, from an engineering standpoint, that should have never been approved, but it is what it is. It's my understanding from looking at the cross-sections and the topography that the access road, the emergency access road, is as steep, if not steeper. Second point I want to make, I draw, I looked at the access today, the pavement is not in disrepair. There are some overhanging branches that take three men, maybe half a day to trim back to get better access. And again, echoing the comments earlier, that, that easement has a southmost exposure. Bluff Ridge Drive, the primary access, has a north exposure and since I've been there in 14 years, there was a time that we were unable to get out of Bluff Ridge Drive due to icing conditions. Again, I have no problem personally with allowing the applicants to use that easement for their access. I have no problems with not, no trespassing. I have no problems with no trespassing lane signage. I question if it remains an easement. I'm certainly not a lawyer, but I question that the underlying property owner would be liable for that easement. Excuse me, if that easement's established by the city, the city would be liable for the easement itself. So, in conclusion, I would ask that you leave the easement. I would ask that you work out a way to allow the applicant to have use of that easement, to access his property, but I would ask that you do not abandon the easement and run the risk that someone in a later time and that the lower lot decides to go in and destroy that easement. It's been there, it's in good repair, it has potential use as an emergency in severe weather, and I see no advantage to the city for abandoning something that's been bought and paid for and has lasted all these years. Again, I sympathize with the applicant's need for access, and I would certainly support them having the use of that drive, to make a circle drive, whatever they need to do, but I would ask that you not abandon it for fear that it might ultimately be destroyed. Thank you very much, for your attention.
Any questions?
I have several, and I imagine there's more.
Okay.
No notices were required to be sent.
For this item?
Yeah.
No.
Can I let me comment on that?
Sure.
So Brenda, did you send out notices to people or contact people that were involved?
Yes, I sent an email to all of those that were on the list, that spoke to Chief Smith.
Okay.
There were, I'd say about 10 or 12 people on that list.
So it wasn't a requirement, but because we knew they had an interest, we did contact them?
And would the city be liable for accidents that happened on our easement?
As you can probably imagine, I don't really necessarily want to talk about liability unless you want me to, and I'm glad to. I think you need to step back, I think one way to answer this is to step back, and this easement was established by the plat as a fire lane easement. And that is actually defined in our fire code as basically allowing the city, and particularly its fire department's vehicles, to use it. It was never intended nor authorized to be an access, you know, down the hill in icy weather or any such. It's merely for our fire apparatus to use during emergency conditions, and that's it, that's the limit of it. Getting to the liability, you know, we have that right. If anything were to occur on that, the owners would have a right to, you know, press trespassing charges, because no one has a right to use that except for the city. You know.
It looks to me like, what do they call it, an attractive nuisance, a thing that is very dangerous for people even to be walking up and down. It's so steep, that was my first thought. What if somebody falls down, breaks his leg?
Would we?
And his lawyer says, well, we'll just sue the city.
Sure, and that could happen, and cities are faced with, you know, premise liability suits like that all the time. And our argument would be, well, we have this access.
Right, but we even expect.
Right, so there would be all sorts of, you know, legal arguments that we would make to try to get out of liability.
Sure, sure. What, I remember the last easement conversation we had. We talked, we established that the city normally expects the property owner to maintain the easement, right? The one on singing winds that we talked about, and one in Habitat subdivision. We don't mow easements, we don't do anything for them. They belong to the property owner, we just have the right to go on it and dig up pipes if we have to.
Yes.
So, we don't have any maintenance responsibility for this easement, and we haven't been doing any maintenance on it.
I don't know if that's the case about the maintenance. I mean, I'd argue that if we were, wanted to continue to use it for the fire lane easement, that we ought to maintain it for that purpose. Otherwise, I think it goes to the property owner's argument that we don't need it.
Yeah.
Is there a sewer easement too, though?
That's just at the very bottom, Diane, and. It doesn't, it's not under that concrete.
Yeah, this would be, abandoning and vacating the easement would have no impact over that sewer line, sewer easement, right.
And I guess as an addendum to tag on to what Ms. Summerlin is saying, I'm trying to look for every way in the world to help the residents to feel safe and have an alternate access in case there is a freeze. The problem that I'm seeing is a legal issue. What do we call it? I mean, if we maintain an easement, what kind of easement is it? It's not a fire lane, it's not an emergency fire lane for the city, it's not a sanitary easement. We don't have anything to call it, you know what I'm saying? It's a taking. We've taken somebody's property. Yeah, I sympathize. For a purpose. But I just don't see legally, you know what I'm saying? I understand what the residents are saying, and I feel sure that the owners of the property would cooperate without a doubt if there was any issue with weather or safety up there. I just don't know, if we maintain an easement and it isn't a fire lane, emergency easement, what are we going to call it?
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I know this is a really touchy subject, and we are not trying to in any way cause dis, you know, any kind of upset anyone, and I realize that most of you have lived up there for a very long time, and we're new, and that's kind of hard, too. But the truth is this, is that even if there is ice on Bluff Ridge, if there's that much ice, maybe we shouldn't be driving out anyway, we should just kind of let it thaw. So you're taking a risk regardless, it's, nothing's that important. As far as your safety is concerned, we're trying to look after your safety. And I realize that the road may seem okay, but there is a rebar poking up out of the curbs now on the road. We're trying to clear the property, and as we're doing that, there are people who walk it every day, and I know that's been going on for decades, where they do it for exercise and things of that nature. While we were out there clearing the property, I myself lost my balance and almost rolled down the hill. So, you know, this is something, we're trying to look after our family, but the truth is, is that it is our property, and if the city does decide to maintain it for fire use only, it is still private property. And, you know, our concern is trespassing, there are beer bottles, people hang out there and drink and watch the sunset, and that's great, but at this time, it's purchased, and we're now trying to build a home. So, it's important for us not to upset our neighbors, and we want it to be a well-rounded decision, but we need to just kind of state the facts and kind of take emotions out of it in the sense that it's private property, and.
Can I also ask the chief, did you see the condition of the road, sir, with the rebar hanging out of the curbs? And did you notice that?
I've driven it several times, and I don't recall the rebar that you're describing.
I can provide pictures of that. There are several places in the curb that go down the road where there's two to three foot of rebar that is hanging out of the concrete.
It's covered by brush.
Yeah. Maybe people haven't seen it, but it is there, and I think that is a risk.
Mr. Seigerman?
I mean, I have a simple question, and I don't know if Mr. Hayes has the answer to this. This is, Mike Seigerman, I live at 4,000 Comanche Trace Drive in Kerrville. If this is a fire department easement only, and that's what the city granted the easement for, does the public have legal access to drive up and down it?
No.
So the citizens that are using it shouldn't be using it to begin with, and I'm not questioning whether they need to get out or something, but I go back to what Mary Ellen said, that forget about someone falling down. If you've got someone driving up and down that place, and you have a car wreck, or someone gets hit and gets killed because you can't see up and down the road, whether we think we have a liability or not, as the city, I think we do have a liability. If it's a fire department easement only, and you have private citizens walking up and down it, driving up and down it, they shouldn't be on that easement. That's my question.
And again, we can't designate it as a sidewalk, you know, or a park easement, I mean, we can't do that. I'm just looking at some legal way that we could have this designation, you know, for the residents to feel safe, but I just don't see that, we don't have, we don't have anything to call it. I live on a very steep driveway, and I remember that time in the last 14 years, that it was slick with ice. The ice was, the children and I got the tops of garbage cans and skidded down it for fun. There was no use in anybody trying to drive until that thing melted. I just would submit that that's a pretty rare occurrence in Kerrville, and within a few hours, it was gone, and we could get in and out.
Good evening, Mayor White, City Council members. Thank you so much for allowing me to have just a moment. As I sat in, and I had, I'm sorry.
Do you mind me address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sherri Jones, 2126 Bluff Ridge Drive. I want you to know, to start with, I really do not have skin in the game. I am on the other side, I am on the crest of that front side hill. Welcome, we're glad to have you. And may I just say that I can tell you, we have a very close, very wonderful neighborhood. It's like family. I've been there since 1997, and we've always gotten along really well. I would like to see us keep that trend amongst all of us, because we've been good friends, good neighbors, and like family. So what I would say to you is, if it is private property, again, I do not have skin in the game as far as living in that realm, so that kind of makes me irrelevant in that area. But I would say, anyone that has private property, I would not want someone to be able to, we all have easements, I understand that, but I would not want someone to be able to take my property unnecessarily. So, thank you for your time, and again, welcome, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, Sherri. Any other questions or comments by council from the audience? And again, we want everybody to be friends and love each other. And Carolyn Lipscomb, did you want to speak, address?
I just have a question.
If you'll address.
Just for my own personal information. Because we live in, Carolyn Lipscomb, 909 Lake Drive. We live in an area where the city has a 20-foot easement across the back of our property. And my question is, where it was supposed to have been a fire lane, and Mr. Hayes has stated that nobody should even be on it except the fire department. Can't the city, I realize that that doesn't keep people off, because people break the law every day, but can't the city post it as being for official use only?
Those signs are there. It's there.
It's there.
The problem is, we don't need it for official use anymore, according to Chief Smith, and so we can't legally designate it as an emergency fire lane, because it's not used, it will not be used for that. Am I correct in my assessment legally, Mr. Hayes? Am I correct?
Are you talking about expanding the use, is that what you're saying? I don't understand.
Well, if you take an easement, if you designate an easement for the city, it has to be for a designated purpose.
Right.
Sewer or fire or something. If we don't need that for sewer, we don't need it for fire, what do we need it for? That's what I'm saying. Am I making sense?
Yes, I mean, you have to designate it for the use.
That's right.
Some use, and we can't arbitrarily just say, we want it to now be a different type of easement.
Right.
Without the city taking some other action to make that happen, which would be, you mentioned it earlier, the C-word. So, I don't think that's the intent of the council here to try to do that.
Just one comment on the icy roads, council. I think it's consistent with our policy. Whenever we have icy roads in the city, you know, we encourage residents to stay off the street. And while the north side may ice over quicker than the south side, typically you need two things to have icy roads. You need moisture and freezing temperatures. And if you have the combination of the two, then you're going to have freezing streets on the north as well as you will on the south.
Let me ask a couple of questions. One, we keep going around and around about the steepness of this easement, and it was mentioned by one of the speakers before, I don't know that, I mean, I walked, I mean, I walked a lot of streets during the campaigns, and I walked up this thing, I know I wasn't supposed to, I did see the sign, but I walked up it.
Oh, no.
And I also, I also walked up the other side, and the street itself is extremely steep. So if we're going to use shutting this down based on steepness, we've got to shut down the road. Now, I don't see us doing either one of those. The other, we keep talking about liability on the easement on the property owner. Are you telling me that the sidewalk in front of my house, I am liable for the injuries that occur on it? I don't think so. I do have to maintain them, I have to mow them around the sidewalks, but that's an easement on my property, so, and I can't, I can't claim that property as long as the sidewalk's there. So, we call it private property, but it's not. There's an easement there. So, I mean, I understand the difference, but regardless. And then, back to the fire lane use, it's my understanding that it wasn't an easement set up as a every-time use, it was set up as a just-in-case use. Is that correct or no? Do we even know?
The signage and the purpose has been designated for emergency vehicles only.
Right, but I mean, as far as, was it not set up as a, like a secondary access? Or no?
Even more, George, it was until Westcrest.
Right.
In an interim, until Westcrest was finished, right?
To.
In the minutes.
Right, but basically what I'm getting at is, it's not so much that you, it wouldn't be your first choice to go up it, is if it was, if the brush was cleared back, and we had the ice situation that we're talking about, and we're not talking about coming down off the hill, we're talking about there's a fire up there, would you even consider going up a cleared-out fire lane?
That's what I'm seeing, councilman, we would not, because we have better access, better roads from the north and the south to provide us access to Bluff Ridge.
But isn't it just the one access, Bluff Ridge itself, no?
Yes, we can get to Bluff Ridge from both the south and the north.
But the Bluff Ridge on the north side is steep and whatnot, so if we had a emergency situation during a weather situation, is it even conceivable that you would go up this lane?
No, we, I can't find anyone that's been in the fire department in the last 30 years that used this to respond to Bluff Ridge, is what I'm saying. You know, we don't use it.
In 2001, the minutes said that the fire chief had noted that the concrete driveway was too steep for fire trucks and EMS units. So, and it says the adjacent owners at that time had been advised of abandonment, and staff recommended the fire lane easement, concrete drive be abandoned, and ownership reverting to the property owners. That was in 2001. It did pass unanimously, five to zero in 2001. It's just that somehow, someone addressed this earlier, somehow it never came back for the second reading, and nobody seems to know why.
Right. And I'd feel more comfortable knowing why before, I mean, is that an impossibility to find out?
We did contact the former city planner at that time. As you recall, August 2001 was right around the time of September 11th. He didn't recall the exact instance of why that was never put back on the agenda, but that was obviously quite a disruptive event nationwide.
The minutes of 8:28, the very next meeting, when you would have expected it, were before 9/11, and it wasn't there.
That's right.
It seems obvious to me that there was citizen protest.
Yeah.
And the council backed off. I would think so. Although, it didn't say.
Would it be actionable to ask all of the involved residents to get together and try one more time to find a solution from their point of view, rather than us trying to legislate it? A number of them have spoken positively about the situation, and there's been some that have spoken, clearly they got a problem there, but I'm just wondering if they think they might be able to get together over the course of the next two weeks or a month, if it took that long, and try to find a solution to it.
The only thing I could think of, and we don't need to beat around the bush forever, I'm sure this evening, but the only thing I can think of would be a legal question. I'm sure this evening, but the only thing I can think of would be a legal question. Is there another designation? If we cannot legitimately call this a fire lane easement, is there another purpose the city could designate?
Well, I think conceivably, and Mike, you can speak to this, but if, if the current owners agreed voluntarily to designate it as something else, that's possible. But, you know, some sort of access easement or something of that nature. But Mike.
Yeah, you're gonna have to go to the, those property owners and say, we, we wanna expand the use beyond or instead of a fire lane easement. And it sounds like they wouldn't wanna do that. I mean, you've heard that they're trying to delete this use and, and use their property. I don't think they wanna use it, you know, expand it as a sidewalk or one-way street or anything.
That's what I'm saying. There's nothing we can legally designate it. So it would have to be voluntary.
Not without their permission.
Yeah, it would have to be with the owner's permission as something or the other.
May I respond just quickly?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just in response to, um, I can't read your name because I don't have my glasses on. I'm sorry, thank you.
George.
My understanding is, the reason this road was originally built was because there was no other access to the top of Bluff Ridge because Crestview in the back had not been completed. That development was not completed. So it was built for access up there until the main route was completed. And then that happened and they haven't used it since then. Is that correct? That was, I think, the understanding.
That's what the 2001 Agenda Minutes says.
Yes, that's where I read that.
Um, and, and just quickly, as far as, um, designating it as something else, and I'm not trying to be crass in any way, but I don't know that if we wanted a walking trail, if Kerrville wanted to, you know, provide a walking trail for their citizens, is anyone else willing to volunteer their property for a walking trail? You know, we have a son and we have a family and we have all those things. So, uh, you know, it's just, it's private property. And, um, Bluff Ridge is available for walking down the other side. And it is a safety issue. And I know we kinda keep bouncing around that, but what you're basically saying is, if someone falls down on our sidewalk now this easement, we're, we're liable for that. So, I don't know that I wanna be liable for that. And when we purchased the property, um, we were not aware that it was public use. And, and I think it was brought up earlier that it's always been public use and, and that's what it is. And, um, I, I'm not aware that that is true, that it's not public use at all. So, again, we're, we're really not trying to cause any rifts in our neighborhood. We're just trying to develop the property. Our goal is to build a home for our family and use the property that we built. And again, if the city decides to keep the easement, we ask that you help us police it and keep people off of it. So how we do that, I don't know. But that, that would be our request, is to have access.
So, Mr. Ferguson, I believe that's the answer to your question. It would not be voluntary. So, we don't have a legal means, we don't have a voluntary means. So at this point, I think we need to wrap this up unless there's any more comments. Let's wrap this up and I will entertain a motion from council.
I'll move to abandon the right of way.
The emergency easement. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Can I just add something? Action tonight won't make that happen. We will have, this will have to come back with an ordinance, just like what happened in 2001.
Oh, that's right.
Right, right. So, you all will direct us in some form or fashion to take the next step and bring you back. Future action.
Okay, my motion is to direct the staff to prepare an, an ordinance to abandon this easement.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, would you raise your hand? All opposed? Are y'all four?
Opposed.
Opposed?
I am the four.
You're four. Motion carries four to one. Am I correct? Am I correct?
Yes, I oppose.
Okay, and, and I wanna tell everyone that's here, I don't see any other option for us. I'm sorry for the people that don't have access, I understand. I just don't see any legal way for us to do this. And that's the whole reason for my opinion. And thank you all for coming and thank you all for your patience. Item number 6B. Authorization to submit a funding application to the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation, amount not to exceed $100,000 for an aquatics feasibility study. Ms. Boil.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a project that you've, um, we've been talking about for a couple of months now between the, the EIC and the City Council. Um, this is for an application to apply to the EIC for a feasibility study for the Olympic Pool. Um, the pool was built in 1970, it's 47 years old. Um, it has not seen significant upgrades or renovations since that time. Um, and there are some issues that need to be addressed. The, um, at a minimum, the mechanical equipment infiltration system needs to be evaluated. The pool has leaks and it's also outdated. KISD and Shriners University have also expressed interest in a year-round competitive facility. And preliminary discussions with them have been favorable for that. Both organizations, um, have also attached a letter in your packet. If this were to be done, updates would, at a minimum, be required to heat the pool for a year-round competitive facility. And the feasibility study would provide options for either a year-round facility, a recreational facility, or a combination of both. This is something that the EIC budgeted for in their budget and both the EIC and City Council have approved it. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions from Ms. Boil?
Do, do either KISD or Shriners contemplate sharing in the costs?
They have expressed.
Or what would be the, what would be the idea? They would, they would rent the facility for competitive practice and tournaments and stuff like that?
The terms right now are, it's a little bit soon to, to know that.
I know, I know.
But they have expressed interest in helping to contribute to the project.
Okay.
Do we have a ballpark of what, I mean, I know this is just a feasibility study, but do we have a ballpark of the cost of one of the options that might come out of it?
It really, it really depends on what kind of improvements you're looking to make. And this, I can tell you, it's probably gonna be, um, at least a million-dollar project. Um, and just, it's gonna go up from there depending on what you're wanting to do. It's very expensive to renovate a pool.
Okay, so, the, the reason I'm asking it is because, uh, the project itself is gonna ultimately be something we're asking EIC for funding on?
Correct.
So does, I guess my real question is, is there a shelf life to the feasibility? Because are we sure what EIC has in its budget in the next year or two? As far as even attempting the project that's behind the feasibility study? Do you know what I'm saying?
Not much.
Okay.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Go ahead.
So, the, on the 17th of this month, it's, the EIC board is going to look at their current year budget, their proposed budget and future budgets. And then you all will look at it on the 25th. So this item could be discussed then if you wanted to defer it for, until after that discussion.
I absolutely agree.
EIC funding would not be the only option that you would have. You could do like, um, many cities do and issue general obligation bonds after a, a vote of the, you know, the, the citizens. So you have, you have some other options available to you.
Yeah. Yeah, that was gonna be, Mr. Rudy, my, are you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, that was gonna be my comments. Uh, certainly it's something long overdue, Ashley, there's no question about that. Um, I did see it in the EIC budget, you know, for the feasibility study. However, I do say that that was before some of these imminent projects that we're gonna need to fund in the next few years. Cause you know, I'm just looking at the debt limit. And this is something, as Mr. McDaniel said, we haven't even explored yet on our water sewer needs or our EIC or capital budget. We haven't discussed. And so, um, I don't know why we would do this now until we have that discussion. I think it would be more prudent to defer this till we see what other needs. I know there was $6 million originally that they, they were anticipating it would cost for this aquatic center. $6 million, that would have to be funded. And so I counted up about $29.7 million in needs, other needs, at water treatment, wastewater, the lowest tank repaint, public safety, perhaps the trihalomethane project and the Legion Drive. These are so necessary today, yesterday. So until we hear from Mr. McDaniel, I would think it would be prudent to defer. I think it's wonderful that we're talking with KISD and Shriners University. I think that's great. Uh, in fact, I met with, um, two of the board members from KISD a year ago and we talked about some of these same things. But until we see, if we're not gonna be able to fund a project for two, three years, I don't, with Mr. Rudy, see why we do that. And the other question that I had, just simply on the, the number itself, where did we come up with the $100,000? Uh, and who did we anticipate using and how would we come about that source?
The $100,000 is, um, came about from a number that the EIC dropped into their budget based on like studies in the aquatics industry. Um, the firm that we've had initial conversations with is called Councilman Hunsucker. And they're a large firm in Texas that this is what they do, is they evaluate facilities, they build facilities, they renovate facilities. Um, and that's somebody that we would be interested in talking to and to further the study with.
Cause my suggestion would be that, as Ms. Summerlin said, that we have conversation with the KISD and, and Shriners University and just kind of see what might be possible and feasible as they're working through their budget processes also. I know Shriners doing some additional housing, so, you know, in what form they'd like to participate. Those are kinda some ideas we could get in-house. But my preference, Council, would be to defer this until we hear from, which will just be next month, in July, on what we're looking at for EIC and, and, uh, capital improvement.
So this, you'd, you'd put it off until the second meeting of July?
Uh, well, I, we don't meet with him until the 25th, so I think it'd probably have to be the first of August.
That's right.
So just basically a month.
I'd like, I'd like to ask also that we try to find another one or two firms that could submit a bid. And let's get, try to get competitive bids for this study. I mean, if it's a $100,000 study, that's notable in my mind, so.
Sure, and it may not come in at that, that's just kinda top of the line, we're thinking it could be.
My observation is, when you have multiple bids, we, it turns out they're a little lower than when we just have one bid.
I just wanna clarify, this is the, the first step in the process of asking for the funding from EIC. We certainly anticipate coming back to the council with either a request for qualifications process or a request for proposal process.
Whatever's appropriate.
So that way we get competitive bids and make sure we're getting good value for those dollars.
For sure, for sure.
Historically.
And just, also, just for background, a lot of the projects you've named would not qualify for EIC funding, right?
No, but it's the debt, it's the borrowing itself because that goes against everything. We'd have to borrow to do the pool, we'd have to borrow to do these other things. And so that's, you know, we're looking at, our double A rating would be about $10 million a year. So, that's why I want to hear what he had in mind. Okay? Is that a consensus of council that we can defer it until that time? Okay.
I'm okay with it.
All right, okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Boil. Item number 6C. Is authorization to negotiate a professional services agreement for design of the HEB Tennis Center.
Good evening again. Um, this is also a project that you've seen for the past couple of months. Kind of the timeline, we brought this to you back in October to request authorization to submit the application to the EIC. So we've been working on it for the past couple of months. And, uh, in January, uh, council considered and approved the funding agreement. So where we're at now is, we issued the RFQ for the design services. We had eight firms submit, um, uh, submit proposals. And here, we're gonna ask you tonight for authorization to enter into negotiations with one of those firms. Um, as a refresher, here's some things that staff identified as minimum infrastructure improvements to the facility. Uh, we need to improve the path of travel and ADA access. The courts need to be evaluated. Evaluate the drainage and parking, irrigation, landscaping and lighting. Um, and then signage, fencing, wind screens, net, equipment, playground and observation areas too. Uh, these were the eight firms that were, uh, that submitted, um, proposals. They were ranked based on a couple of areas of criteria. The first one was their experience with similar projects, specifically tennis center renovations, and understanding of the project, including ability to respond and the public input process. Strickland Rollins rated, um, the highest out of all eight. And this is a firm that we would recommend authorization to negotiate, um, professional services agreement with. Um, they've undertaken, they had by far the most experience from all the firms that submitted. Um, and they have a local engineer that would be working with them for this project, which would be Hewitt Engineering. And some of their, uh, prior experience you can see in your packet is the American Airlines Tennis Center in Dallas-Fort Worth area, the University of Texas at Dallas Tennis Center, North Richland Hills Tennis Center, and the Texas A&amp;M varsity tennis center as well, for some of their notable projects. So the next steps for this project would be, um, authorization to engage into those negotiations. And this process will engage various tennis-related, um, community stakeholders in planning and design for the future of the facility. And hopefully we'll culminate in a construction contract, which we will bring back to you as well to approve.
Where did they, this, the vendor you are thinking about recommending, or they fall along the cost curve?
They don't, they didn't submit their cost, so that's a part of the negotiation process. And if that comes in too high, then we would.
So of the, of all eight, I believe you said you had eight?
Eight, yes.
Eight submitted a bid, but you don't know what the cost was gonna be?
When, when you do an RFQ, you can't, for professional services, you can't consider that.
I didn't understand it was an RFQ.
It's state law and you can't ask.
Yes, I understand that, yes, I understand that.
You do have an idea though of what it might be for the design portion of it, only just out of curiosity, cause we know what we have for the total project, but.
The total project is 1.5, but we don't know what the, the cost is gonna be until we enter those negotiations.
Actually, they had in here, the examples you had are from '97, '98, '03, '13 and '17. Uh, but I, certainly they've done others in between, tennis centers, correct? I don't know why they chose these to put in here, but in the summary, it said something about 2,000 and other years, but is that?
I think the ones that they chose to provide were more similar in scope to the project.
To what we're looking for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. And it does say, if negotiations fail, you can go to the next one.
That's exactly right.
There's a 3.6, a 2.3, a 1.3 million, a 1.8. That's probably fine.
Yeah, the, the scope of their projects.
Yeah.
Well, they look good. Any questions by council? Any questions from the audience? If not, I would entertain a motion to negotiate the professional services agreement, designate the staff to enter into the agreement for the HEB Tennis Center design.
I make a motion that we negotiate that and let's get on with fixing the courts.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Ashley. Number 7A is, uh, report on the Kerrville Festival of the Arts. This will be by you.
Last time, I promise.
Okay.
Okay, pursuant to the FY '17 budget, the, the council and the city funds four different community events through the Hot Funds and the Kerrville Festival of the Arts is one of them. So I'm gonna turn it over to Luanne Anderson, she's the executive director of the event, and will provide a post-event report for you.
Thank you, Ashley. Uh, Mayor White, members of the council, good evening. My name is Luanne Anderson and it's a pleasure to visit with you all again. I thank you for your time this evening. Uh, we take this opportunity to give you a brief overview of the Fourth Annual Kerrville Festival of the Arts. As I'm sure you recall, we began this event, uh, in 2014. That first year, it was just two blocks on Water Street. We had 75 artists. It proved quite successful, continued through the next two years, 15 and 16, expanding to include the 200 block of Earl Garrett Street. And we also saw an increase in the number of artists who participated. This year, it was held on May 27th and 28th. This is Saturday and Sunday of Memorial Day weekend. Again, it included the same three blocks, 700, 800 Water and 200 Earl Garrett. This year, we had about 112 artists. We continue with basically the same goals we've had since the beginning. There's been a history of a fine art event in Kerrville for more than 40 years and we certainly wanted to continue that tradition. We also wanted to enhance the economic environment of our downtown, to bring tourists to Kerrville with a multi-day event, to emphasize our historic downtown as a destination, not only a Memorial Day weekend, but with strong hope that many of our visitors will return at other times during the year. We continue to work. at other times during the year. We continue to work to support Curville's image as a fine arts center for South Texas and with the goal, the outcome of revenues generated by the festival, to provide an opportunity for scholarships for the study of fine arts at the university level. Just some highlights. As you may recall, the first three years of the festival, the weather just about beat us to death. It was pretty awful. This year, finally gave us a break and we did see a significant increase in the crowds that we had downtown. We estimated this year, and this, it is an estimated attendance, we don't charge admission. It's free, free admission, free parking, family-friendly event. But we estimated we had between 6,000 and 6,500 visitors over the two days in the downtown area. Of course, it's, it's a fun thing to watch the crowds as you're down there. You see people shopping, see people meeting friends, sometimes people they haven't seen since last year. They visit, they explore our downtown and the various businesses there, see a lot of families together for the holiday weekend. This year, we had a lot of fun with kids. Maybe the weather was part of it, being a kind of a kids' event this year. A boy and his dad dancing and several of our artists were actually demonstrating their work this year, including the furniture maker you see there on the right. He would actually make these incredibly thin scrolls of wood. And then he would put the child's name and the date on it and reach over and handed it to them. And it was great fun for them. One of the big highlights was the KACC booth where they have various children's activity. Throughout the event, we saw a lot of proud parents walking around carrying their children's art projects as they completed touring the event. Of course, it's always a pet-friendly event. We always have quite a few four-footed visitors and they seem to have a pretty good time as well. We make an appointment to visit with all the artists throughout the weekend. Almost all of them reported they had a very, very good weekend in Curville. With the growing reputation of the festival, we're beginning to attract some name artists. We were very proud this year to have Mr. George Boutwell. He was the Texas State Artist in 2006. This was his first year to participate in the festival. We certainly hope he'll see fit to visit us again. Everybody comments about downtown Curville. There are none of the artists and none of the visitors that I've ever talked to that didn't say what a pretty town it is, how friendly it is, what a good time they have, and how they plan to come back. We also take time to visit with our downtown businesses. I have a hard time visiting some of the businesses during the festival because I can't get in the door. They're too crowded. And they're too busy to talk to me if I can get in. So afterwards, we do go by, talk to a lot of them. And I think almost all of our businesses had a very good weekend as well. Of course, one of our goals is economic benefit to our community. We ask Mr. Michael Vane every year to give us his calculation based on our increased crowd size this year. He has calculated that the economic benefit is approximately $750,000. There were a number of events in Curville that weekend, and we know the festival can't take credit for all of the visitors who came to town. But with all of the events here for an arts weekend in Curville, I think it's pretty, pretty clear what a tremendous benefit it is to the community. We do have a website and we keep pictures of the artist's work posted there all year long. So if you didn't get a chance to come to the festival, you can still go to the website and see some of the work that was there. This year, we had a major emphasis on our social media outreach. I think it was very successful. We chose a few of the comments that we found on Facebook. I promise, I do not know Mr. Albert Barton. I've never met him. I didn't hire him to write that. But if I ever meet him, I'll certainly say thank you. I appreciate his comments, especially the fact that this was his third trip here for the festival. Just a couple of others. I think almost all the comments on Facebook, any of the social media sites, we saw people spoke of the quality of the artwork that was at the festival this year. Nothing would be possible without the support of the city of Curville. And for that, we have a tremendous thank you to offer to council and to city staff. Director Boe is always been a supportive supporter of the festival since the first year. We also received support from fire, police, street department, of course Parks and Rec, health official, and from K-Pub. And we thank them tremendously. We look forward to next year. With your continuing support, we hope to see the festival grow, become better and better known, and attract more and more name artists from across Texas and the Southwest. Thank you.
You got to say you could donate organs while you were there. Well, not while you were there, but you could sign up.
Sign up while you're there.
I said, no, I'm a politician. I'm not signing nothing. But we appreciate all the work that you all did too. We did turn out, we had a homegrown artist there and I appreciate that too.
Thank you very much.
Do we have a guesstimate as to the attendance?
Again, it is an estimate, but we believe over the two days, 6,000 to 6,500.
That's good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For everything you said. Okay, item number 7B is budget and economic update, Ms. Yarborough.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the financial budget and update for ending of May 31. In the general fund, the revenues for the month was $1,395,631, bringing our year-to-date of $22,964,858. Our expenditures for the month was $1,935,190. And our year-to-date was $18,397,324. In the water sewer fund, the revenues for the month was $944,0218. Our year-to-date revenue was $7,374,864. Our expenditures for the month was $870,058. Our year-to-date was $7,398,997. On the hotel motel fund, the revenue for the month was $123,563, bringing our year-to-date to $760,0398. Our expenditures for the month was $231,250, bringing our year-to-date of $731,450. And that includes a quarterly payment to CVP. So that's not a monthly expense normally. On our economic update, we have our listing of our most active projects at this time, showing the project budget, the activity for the month, our project-to-date month, and our project balances. Below that, in our development activities from the development services, we had five new residential permits issued in the month of May and $2,550,000 in commercial value permits issued, and that's new and improvements. In our housing inventory has stayed pretty level. Our unemployment is still good and our utility accounts are growing. With that, I'll turn it back over to you.
And the sales tax collections were actually, water and sewer was actually May, right? On this report?
Yes. The water and sewers, the May billings, the sales tax that we received in May was spent locally here in March. The hotel motel was spent here in April.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Yarborough? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If not, we'll move on to item number 8A, appointments to city boards and commissions. Tonight, we have three additional applicants for the mayor's youth advisory council. I have spoken with them and you may have as well. But I do recommend and propose that we, and I'll make it a motion and then we can have discussion, that we appoint Catherine Buchanan, who by the way, was here at a quarter to six this evening with her mother just to meet us. And I thought that was really interesting. It was, showed a lot on her part. So I, I move that we nominate Catherine Buchanan, Grace Gario and Trey Leighton, who by the way, decided that I had to make sure they could attend the meetings. And he worked it out with his coach, so everything is good. So I move that we appoint these three to the mayor's youth advisory council.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And we look forward to working with those young people. Item number nine is city manager's report. Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you, mayor. Just a few items. First of all, very pleased to let you know that this week, by the end of the week, we'll have our new website launched and much more user-friendly, much more attractive, I think better represents the city of Curville and the community. So real excited that, that will be out there and live by the end of this week. Also, just to make you aware that our public safety department in particular, but also Parks and Recreation and other departments have been in full swing preparing for the July 4th event. So lots of planning and preparation that'll go in to that event and we'll advise you of any particulars that you might want to be participating in, in the next couple of days and share that with you. Next item is the comprehensive plan update or the new comprehensive plan. I would request that the council go ahead and submit your names to me by July 21. Each of you, as we discussed during your retreat, we're going to nominate six individuals. And then of course, you would also serve on that steering committee. And then perhaps something you might want to consider is your planning and zoning commission also participate on that committee. That would be my recommendation. But we can talk about that more. And the resolution to appoint them would be on August 8. So between now and August 8, I would encourage any residents that are interested in serving, contact you or me individually and we'll make sure that that's passed along. If, if people are not chosen to serve on the steering committee, there will also be several committees or subcommittees involved for particular aspects of the plan. And they might have expertise in particular areas that would be helpful. So there's still a lot more opportunity to participate. So want to make you aware of that. I am going to go to the planning and zoning commission to, to talk to them also about the plan at their next meeting as well. Then also here over the weekend, I just want to compliment the chief and Kim and handling the issue that we had with the Atmos Gas and using code red appropriately without alarming residents unduly, but also making sure that they understood that we were involved and really monitoring that situation closely. And then finally, I want to publicly thank Caitlin for her work. I've only worked with her for now seven weeks, but she is really a true professional. And I think she's set the bar a little higher in terms of our communications, in fact, a lot higher. And so we're actively looking for her replacement. Her last day will be this Friday. So we want to thank her for her service.
Yes, and she did a great job helping me with the mayor's youth council. So thank you, Caitlin. I don't know what the boyfriend had over us, but anyway. Is that all you had, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Wait, what was the date that you wanted the comp plan names by?
July 21.
Oh, he emailed us this morning. Any other questions for Mr. McDaniel? If not, item number 10 is items for future agendas. Any council member?
I have one, I don't know that it's an item for a future agenda, but we just made the appointments to the youth advisory council. And as their name suggests, they're advisory. And if there's a way, I'd like to see them involved as a group, maybe as a one-person solution as part of the comp plan. Is there a way to kind of utilize them in that process?
Actually, they don't start meeting until September.
They don't?
But it's a long process. So yes, we-
Right. I think that's a super idea. And I know that some of you have talked about appointing younger individuals to the group. And so whether it's a committee or it's a separate forum, because we'll have a variety of public forums, you know, including, you know, everything from the business community to neighborhood associations and others in terms of, you know, separate presentations and so forth. So they would be, that'd be a great topic for them in a few months of their meetings, so.
They learn a lot.
Yes.
Watching this process go forward.
So now I got to get, find somebody to help me, Caitlin. That's a good idea. You also mentioned, Mr. McDaniel, I think in your email to us, that because we'll be soon going out into the two-mile probably ETJ, that we didn't limit people who may be interested in serving, not just to the city limits, but to the ETJ area as well at least.
Right.
I just wanted to throw that out there in case anybody's interested. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to say, mayor, that I'll miss the next meeting, the first one in July. I'll be in Vermont acting as a consultant to the council of independent colleges.
Wow. Okay. Bring some cold air back for us.
Looking forward to that part.
Anything else for future agenda from anyone? Okay. Yes, if you, if you can, Ruth.
Just looking over the agenda for this evening, I noticed that there seems to be a lot of interest in all of the athletics that goes on in Curville. And that's fine. That includes the sports complex as well. I just hope that with the work that you're getting ready to do on the budget, that there will be as much emphasis placed on other things that are enjoyed by the citizens of Curville as well as the athletic part of it. Thank you.
Ruth Bradley? And Brenda knows her address. Okay, item number 11 is slated for executive session. We have one item for 800 Junction Highway for discussion. And I would look for a motion to enter in under section 551071 and 551072. I think staff may have put that on there as well. Item number 11B was slated for reuse or reclaimed water distribution system under 551071. So we will have guests in for the first item, 11A, and then we will no doubt narrow the crowd down for 11B. So I would look for a motion to go into executive session for those two items under 551071, 551072.
So moved.
With a motion, we have a second?
A second.
With a motion and a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five zero. We do have one person who wished to speak on item number 11 before we enter. Mr. Strachey?
Bruce Strachey, 821 Earl Garrett. I wanted to speak before this item because our firm has come to the city at two different occasions with an offer on this 800 Junction Highway. We were the only firm that brought a response to the RFP when the property was originally put up for sale back with the former administration and before the building was torn down, which we received no response to. And to date, we've received no response besides that we've ordered another survey or appraisal, but I haven't, we don't, we don't have anything in writing. We don't know where we are. And in the meantime, I've learned through the rumor mill that there's more than one letter of intent before the city. And I'm a little frustrated. And I wanted to voice our, our opinion that over the years, we've tried to look at this property. We've brought what we think is a marketable offer in the, in the market. And I think even an appraiser will tell you that the true market value of a property is the willing seller and a willing buyer coming together. And I just wanted to say that I'd like to have some information about the process. I understand we have an appraisal now. And what's going to happen next?
We're going, going to executive session next.
But, but are we going to respond? Are we, what, you know, what's, what's the process?
And yes, and I'm glad that you spoke. And I'm glad that you put this on the agenda. And I'm glad that we heard you before we went in because we're going to find out what's been brought forward to us. That's, that's all we know at this point. Staff- Staff wants to share with us the information they've received, and I presume that when we come out, we will have an answer for you. And I'm glad that you are still in the mix, and we'll put that in our conversation.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And if we need you, we'll, are you going to be here?
I'll be here. I, I normally stay for executive session.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. At 7:49, we will go into executive session.